What's up y'all? Big y'all, the big y'all, J forty-five, I'm on the show. Uh, good night, Pritchett, the council meeting, first council meeting of the year, twenty twenty-two. Y'all tuning in, shell, being informed what's going on in the city. Uh, I may not stay in the whole meeting, I may stay in the whole meeting, I'm not sure yet. In a way, you know, we got people that's already in the council, they're in. Four members of the council are already here, so. Y'all tuning in. Got a couple of good things on the agenda, some things that moved off the agenda, but we gonna see what's going on. Let y'all see how many people in the building right now. Counselor. Sheriff Clark. Fire Chief, Counselor. I'm right here in the podium, so if somebody's gonna speak, we gonna be right in it, Joe. Anyway, that's it, what's up forty-five? Let's see, y'all. We gonna keep it like this, uh, they got four minutes, they probably gonna start the meeting, so. And, uh, administration sits all down now, so I have a clear view, we gonna be looking at faces this time. Cause we in the mood, spots of where we gonna be at, so y'all, what's up chief? Y'all just be tuning in, man, we, uh. We here, what's up, Ms. Richardson, I see you there. All right, y'all, I see what's going on. Real get over here. I don't think so. How you doing? Councilwoman Richardson. Yeah, we gonna be up there some person tonight. Forty-five got a new seat, bruh. So, you know what I'm saying, if we decide to come on back, little where we'll be at. Now, let's see how close we can zoom in over there. On the beacon, mm, um, mm, um. Oh, yeah. See that, boy, we getting closer over there. Better pull in here right there. So, this, this should be pretty interesting. See? Look at him getting pretty good on him over there. A little bit right here on the podium though, woo, woo. Look at that, I'm being, ain't Joe. Ah, better get away from him. Y'all be ready. Council meeting starts in just a few minutes. I think right there, I'll be good. Anyway, man, uh, big y'all, J forty-five, I'm on the show, brought to you by J Simon. New, uh, song. What name is that song, little forty-five? Shake that ass? Boom, Doc, glow. J forty-five, I'm probably y'all in the team with that. Big y'all, J forty-five, I'm on the show. First episode of this year, oh, do that, good, forty-five got a little dance emoji. Uh, eight-nine? We here. So, hopefully, you know what I'm saying, that council meeting is informative. But I think we just waiting on the arrival of the administration. Don't keep it, Mr. Sammy Green. Chief Hail, and the City Clerk. I know one thing, boy, they gotta warm up in this mug tonight, you hear me? Kinda toasting this little piece. That don't mean that, cause it supposed to get cold at night, so. Y'all don't go out the house without that jacket and think it's gonna be the same temperature when you come back in. Just make sure you know. We need to get the council meeting started. I had fell asleep, I didn't even know it rang, this evening, so I got up and looked outside at the street. And thought about my dog, I had left my dog outside, so I hadn't heard him going, you know what I mean? It was like he was so happy to come in the house. And we, uh, got him and gave him a couple of treats. So, now he chilling now. Little Johnny Young in the building. I don't know who else gonna be here, but, uh. Like the courts crowd right there. The finance lady is here. Ms. Katie Davis is in there. Uh, nurse is here. He can sweep the table, huh? We got some sandals with some socks on. Till it rain, he gonna have them squish your feet. Now, these, uh, soggy and squish your fist. He gonna have them. I feel strange being up in here at the council meeting, right? Jimmy Five Star, man, I got a seat right here next to him, Jim, where you at? Still, still to send, uh, continuous prayers up for your mama as well, Jimmy. Saying we expecting a complete recovery. For your mama, man. Our prayers are with you and your mama, uh. She was on seventy-six, I'm about to reach right up here, look at y'all, they gonna heat her right there. I'm about to reach up there and turn this sucker on, cooling water, the boy, he is wrong in hell. And everybody here gone long sleeve and shirt. And jackets, it's another suffer, Chief, hey, yo. Y'all need a shot, Jim, bring, like, bring, bring, bring it up here. We gonna take shots in the parking lot, you know how we do. This last night is a work week for me too. I get off in the morning, I'm off for the weekend, I need, I need that Jose in my life. Who are they just popped on here, that's a woman. Can't see who she is. Forty-five, that hipper tell me who that woman was, he be on it. When they pop on here. What y'all think, I need to change the temperature? Or just leave it like it is? I don't know, Ms. Ellen come over, I'm asking if she hot tonight? Oh, that could, little, little could. Yeah, here come Ms. Ellen, she better come and speak, I think. Ms. Ellen say good. I did, Ms. Ellen, I remember Ms. Richardson. I'll tell you, warm me here. Right, turn that heater down, like. I'm an assistant to the mouth. Everybody ain't mess, ain't gonna mess with that, he was like, I had to do it. We set up them, uh, cooking like chickens in, uh, Walmart on the road tissue, like. How you doing, you gonna come over here with me? Happy New Year, I just want you to tell everybody Happy New Year.
Happy New Years, everybody, this is Oceah Edwards. Okay? I love this boy.
Nah, I just got patted like a puppy. But I still turn that heater down. Yeah, I turned, it's on seventy-six, I turned that mother down to seventy-one. We need some cooling water up in that line. Burn me up over here. There's another one down there, on the other part of that wall, I wonder if I need to go down there and turn that one down too? Cause I try and change the temperature now. Like I did, I felt the cool breeze that blow through that mother right there. Brother Champ in the building, so we getting ready, man, for the council meeting, y'all. Hit the share button, let somebody else find, uh, see what's going on in the city. But, cause, uh. This is the first city council meeting of twenty twenty-two. Hoping everybody doing fine, I doubt, I hope, you know what I'm saying, y'all. Families, you know what I'm saying, are doing well during this time. Staying COVID-free or whatever else that junky a lot though. Got a partner said he was feeling just fine, he just wanted to go and take a voluntary test to find out what was going on. He said he got there and, uh, said doctor told him he had cold, he said he don't believe he got it. He said he believe he just doing it, trying to see, uh. If they, uh, I mean, see if he gonna take the vaccination. But, I don't know what's going on with that. I'm just gonna try to keep my little system. Up and strong, send a prayer about anybody that's going through that COVID, y'all. Cause it's, uh. It's something else. Here we go, y'all, council meeting session.
Write the word. Write your words. Twenty-two, we're not going back, you're not going right. It's not called over and the time now is five thirty-nine to be young. Uh, won't you say hello to everyone who has seen you? Hopefully, I pray that you all had a wonderful, wonderful holiday season with your families and friends. And I hope that you did not forget the reason for this season. With that said, uh, the room, uh, just say a few of them, uh, that is not the one person allowed to come to this podium. If they are not on the other particular queue.
Administration comes again.
Saturday, uh, obviously, we have three minutes, three minutes to speak. That's for the citizens, but we may also refer to the local authorities, one being the state, which is every one that is here. I'm asking that of the council, all the citizens, and there will be no toleration or defamation of the law. Okay, with that said, it is a matter of due diligence.
We will have invocation and sense of allegiance led by Pastor Sam Lewis.
Let us pray. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and all that is within me, bless his holy name. Bless the Lord, oh my soul, and forget not all his benefits. Father, we are grateful for the privilege of coming to this, the first council meeting of a new year. We pray for new life in our council, we pray for new experiences, we pray for success for our city. We pray for our mayor and his staff, for all the employees of our city. And Father, we pray for the citizens of our city who are still suffering under this great pandemic. And for those who are suffering loss during this time. We pray for our first responders and our firefighters who seem to be fighting fires almost daily during this winter season. And so, we pray your blessing on this city in its entirety. We ask you give us a successful, peaceful, accomplishing for the people of this city meeting tonight. All these things we ask in the name which is above every name, the name of Jesus and the people of God said, amen. And now the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall.
President.
Council President Oceah Edwards. Next item on the agenda, adoption of the, adoption of the minute from December sixteen, twenty twenty-one.
I have read the minutes, uh, any questions, any council members, number one, uh, correction, uh, to add on. I can talk with the city, uh, for, uh, in that matter, it will be corrected. So, any other questions? The council. If not, I make a motion that the municipal accepted the necessary correction.
Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President Oceah Edwards.
Yes.
Item A was removed, which is Council President Edwards' discretion and performance evaluation, removed and pre-council. Item C, Council President Edwards' boot club body.
Doctor. Make the motion that we forward this back, uh. The council returned to, uh, look into the ordinance and, uh. Did all the necessary, uh. Information needed to come back with a sound, uh, ordinance.
Can I hit a second on that tree? Move my second roll call.
To them, McNorwood, I'm agree. Councilwoman Anna Williams.
Can we add a list to that or?
Add two weeks to the motion.
Add to that motion?
Two weeks, right back to the council, two weeks.
The brief route back in two weeks?
Yes, two weeks from then.
May I make a request of the council, please? Uh, for people to be able to hear, get to speak into the mic, please. Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President Oceah Edwards. Next item on the agenda is item C, Council President Edwards' litter, committing, ordinance, and yard of the month.
I make a motion on that, uh, that you refer to the attorney, uh, attorney Harris. Also, information from the mayor to attorney Donald, uh, to look at the ordinance that was then requested by, uh, their attorney Harris. From Mr. Magglio Whitford, uh, to please email, uh, all ordinance events that you find found to their attorney and also to the city council members. And that's inclusive, also, that number two. And that will look at the litter ordinance, uh, and also will look at the yard of the month. Okay? That's number.
Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President Oceah Edwards.
Yes, motion that, this is a three.
Item D, Mr. Sammy Green, CDG Grant, demolition and weed filling.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Would you please say the manual title and the reason for coming to the event?
Okay. The name is Sammy Green, I'm the COVID enforcement supervisor. Uh, the first item, uh, is for the asbestos bid, uh, for the demolition part. Uh, we were not able to, um, open the bid on the fifth. So, I'm asking the council to, uh, reset another date so that we can open the bid, so the bid can be awarded.
Thank you for that, and, uh, Council McCall, would you, uh, state the process, I guess?
We missed the date of opening the bid on the fifth, so we've got rescheduled to open the bid. In order for us to do this, we have to notify the public and the ones that are interested, uh, the bid open. So, we're gonna publicize it in the paper, uh, January the ninth and January the twelfth, which is a Sunday in Lansing. And then for that Tuesday, for the bid to be opened on the eighteenth, January eighteenth at eleven a.m. And then come back before the council, the thirtieth of January the twentieth, to be, uh, awarded to the, uh, doors bid.
Anything else you wanna add to that?
No, ma'am, definitely. Uh, that's my motion.
Hey, Mr. Magglio?
Ma'am, what's up?
Do you understand what the motion is?
Yes, ma'am, that will change the opening date to January the twenty-fourth.
January eighteen.
I'm sorry, January the eighteen. Uh, it will run in the press on January ninth and January twelfth. And it will come before the council on January twenty.
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 If please add the times on that, on Tuesday, or write in the paper, uh, that's eleven, and I, I don't have to do that day. Also, if you look at this, it's going to be awarded, please add the time, it would be up to five thirty. Also, for that motion.
Nothing on that.
Councilwoman Anna Williams. Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood. Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilwoman George McCall.
Yes.
Council President Oceah Edwards.
Yes, motion that. The timing, please.
Yeah, I have one more. Okay, uh. Back in December, uh, we was waiting, uh, uh, introduce the infield project, uh, the meeting that we supposed to have with, uh, Pritchett House. And, uh, they could not meet during that time. Uh, since then, she has gave me a new date that, that, uh, she can meet, uh, in reference to the infield program. Uh, that date would be the twenty-fourth of January, uh, here at City Hall at one o'clock.
I am asked your attorney to ensure that the necessary information is posted, uh, and vetted. Uh, and I think that, uh, the city clerk, he said he'd like to read that information from your attorney, no later than tomorrow. Am I correct?
That was the, the information I need tomorrow to run the ad for, uh, the opening of the, of the bid, I need that tomorrow.
That's the, the part, excuse me, you're right, uh, that's what I'm running here, okay? Saying it needs to be forward, forward from tomorrow. Anything else to bring?
Uh, no, ma'am.
And that was part of the late, my focus?
Yes, yes, ma'am, yes, we said, uh, the, uh, coun, all the council and the administration attend to meet.
Okay, and I will state that for that meeting, in my day, so, there will need to be posted, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'll put that, uh, Mr. Magglio.
Yes, ma'am.
For the MCL meeting on January twenty-fourth, seventeenth, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Next item, item E, Mayor Gordon, our city's insurance design council person, and meeting time.
Getting ready, ready to, to go back and engage in our insurance. I just wanna share with the council in terms of being a part of that engagement, that, so that we all can be a part of looking at what we presently have. You are inviting others to come in and be engaged in that information related to, uh, city insurance. So, uh, again, we'll be following up with additional information for you. We want everyone to be engaged, uh, have a say in the insurance process, or even the carriers related to the insurance, but, hey.
Would it be permissible, and often we have to be posted, there are, uh.
I'm sorry?
Uh, I said, would it be permissible, uh, to say that we would like for the council to be involved?
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Uh, would it be permissible, if you agree, that, uh, all council members need to be part of how the opportunity for a deal?
That's exactly what I'm saying. We all be engaged in that process. Look, that'll be additional information coming, and as we move forward, we'll be able to put those pieces together.
Uh, you will come back with some suggestions in time?
Just later.
That is, uh, you'll refresh the, that's our information, purpose, so this is, am I correct?
I'm correct.
Okay.
Item F was removed after request of the mayor. Item G, Mayor Gordon, appointment of the city clerk.
Mayor Gordon.
Well, as you know, uh, have a chair. Clerk office needs a city clerk. We have the assistant clerk who's not performing all those duties. The clerk office is not just what takes place in this meeting, but there's a lot of things that, that transpire by our city clerk. We need to have a city clerk, we need an assistant clerk, and we need other staff. And I'm asking council to move on identifying the city clerk. Whatever that is, so that we can staff that office in the manner that it should be staffed.
Um, I will state this in the history of the committee, this assembly, and now you are aware that you do have your opinion. That the council is responsible by law, uh, to hire, appoint, uh, high elbow, a city clerk, okay? Uh, that is in the process, and the one that we have now presently, Mr. Magglio, and it was stated. That human opinion was handed out to the administration and also to all council members, and that was handed out at that time. It was stated in council meeting that not only so listen to other people, which will be interviewed by this council. Also, that Mr. Magglio had arrived here, been ordered to apply the policy. That's where it stands, that is my fault, and that's how we're going to proceed, okay? With that said, uh, Mr. Magglio, sign, please.
Madam Chair, if I, if I, if I may.
Certainly.
If I may, I'm, I'm really not speaking about whether or not the council have interest in our assistant clerk or not, our assistant clerk on a five position. I'm only sticking in the sense of staffing the office, really, and, and he is carrying heavy duty as assistant clerk, not only from as the clerk. But also as running the clerk's office, and, and, and that's a lot. And so, I'm just asking you all to move a bit swiffer in that process in getting that done. I'm not questioning who's responsible, what the law said, I'm saying that we need to get. I'm not questioning who's responsible, what the law says, I'm saying that we need to get a clerk, and we need to move swiftly in getting it done, that's what I'm asking.
Okay, I want, I just want to, since the understanding, because I'm misunderstanding why this is happening uh there. The process is in place. That is where we are at, okay? And you will be identified as to when that process is... I do think, and I do understand all the language there, okay? Because, please, second please.
Next, item, item H, contract with R D S Avenue for twenty-twenty-two.
Any questions that they didn't or not so much?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess I wanted to stop on the uh Avenue, I know that the finance committee, we had discussed this numerous times. Avenue made one that collects the taxes for the city. That's incorrect. And uh, is that's correct?
Yeah, uh, Mr. McNamalyum, my mind is hurting.
Avenue is the one that's already collecting uh the city taxes, uh, the license and doing everything for the city already, right?
Thank you so much.
Right, and I think we had uh the contract, this is the contract is up. And so it's back up to be considered to be uh reviewed. And uh, did we have somebody else that we was looking at also?
There is a a competitor company, but not necessarily a person. I would just um request that, you know, if we could table this until next week. I have some questions about Avenue, I've met with them several times, uh, just getting on the ground with them about their process and how they accumulate information, what their monitoring is. I'm not fully satisfied that we are receiving um our value for what we are paying and the services that they are providing. I think there may be some other companies that could serve us better, or there may be ways that we could function better with them. Uh, regardless of what that may look like, I would like another week to investigate that further and to uh speak with y'all sometime about this one.
That's pretty much where I started going, I know the whole conversation went on about them. So uh, with the recognition of the uh, the uh, city attorney, uh, I would make a motion that the uh, table this for a week when we choose.
I think the week is fine.
Week is fine.
I think we...
For a general, actually.
What is Mr. Harris' name?
I'm sorry?
Two weeks? Or two weeks?
One good.
One good, so?
Uh, I think, um, uh, I thank you for that because that those citizens who you made, they do have concerns and...
I can't hear you, Ms. Edwards, I'm sorry.
I said, I thank you for that because that those, because we have concerns as far as from the council, some of the council members.
Yes ma'am.
Also that was discussed on the... Okay, thank you for that.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, uh, second?
I have a question, is this a situation if we decide to go with another uh company that will place bids, put out for bids, is that how that goes?
I think this will be a special service.
Right, it would it would be an exception.
Thank you. If it moves to second?
Madam Chair, yes, problem.
Second? Councilman Andy Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Stephanie Johnson Norwood?
Yes.
Councilman Derek Griffin? Councilman George McCall?
Yes.
Council President O C L.
Yes. Motion, please.
Next item on the agenda, the bid committee.
Uh, no reports when the uh bid committee, Madam Chair?
Yes.
No, no report.
Finance Committee?
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, don't have no report, but I am going to uh this month, now the finance committee, now they're going to go us out. Again, uh, in the future, you're gonna try to schedule a awesome month of finance committee meeting, awesome month. So we can be the attraction was uh going on, even the uh record. Uh, but the finance pretty much running the most smoothly uh this year, so uh we'll come up with the dates. At the base of council meetings, I have a base, great base, a base to handle for the month, for the remainder of the year.
Thank you.
That's my, that's my...
No more reports. Next, I...
Next item will be item late, Mr. Christina Taylor, uh, Pritchard Thrive Grant Application Response process.
Uh, Mr. Christina, uh, if you could come to the podium, please. Um, you said your name?
Yes ma'am.
Your address and your reason for coming to the council, then Mr. McCall, I think that he was in the district.
My name is Christine Taylor, um, I'm a former resident of the city of Pritchard. Um, my mom is currently a resident, I believe that maybe she's in your district, she lives at um six oh three Harkey from Junior Street, so I think that's your district, Ms. Edwards. And I'm also the owner of D and T Package Store, which is located at twenty-one eleven Saint Stephen Woods, Saint Stevens Road here in Pritchard. So I wanted to come this evening um to share my experience, not only with the council, but with you as well, Mayor Gardner, and with the citizens. I was totally in shock of the treatment that I received and the response that I received with this Pritchard um small grant, Pritchard Thrive small grant. The grant came out in a publication, I want to say it was in October, um, and immediately I thought, oh wow, this is something that would definitely help the businesses here, the small businesses that suffered. Um, I applied immediately, I read the process and went through everything. Um, I called, I read the process, and I noticed that it said that you could contact um the city clerk's office, and I think your name was attached to it, Mr. Franklin. At that time, I contacted that office and I was told um to not email my paperwork, but to send it certified mail. So I emailed the paperwork as instructed on the application, sent it certified mail, and I also had my employee to drop it off over here. So my frustration was that I brought my paperwork in three different types of ways to make sure that it got in the appropriate hands. From October until, I want to say, maybe this week, I heard nothing. And I did no response, no communication, no follow-up, it was just dead. And so I knew that we were going home for the holidays, so I said, I will wait till we get back. I left a message for you, Mr. Franklin, and I think you called me back and I missed your... I'm sorry, um, I left a message and I think we missed each other in communication, so I called back this week. Um, at that time, um, I reached out because I didn't know who to communicate to, I didn't know, I was told by the clerk's office that the city council was handling it. What that meant to me, I didn't know. So I was under the impression at that time that I dropped my paperwork off, now I'm being referred to the city council saying that they're handling the disbursements and they decided on who would receive the grant. So I didn't know who my city council person was, I I I I'm ashamed to say that, but I did not know. And at that time, I called every city council member, name that's on that automated system, to kind of reach out to somebody to say, who's responsible for this area. Um, I got Mr. Griffin and then he shared with me, Mr. McCall would be that contact person. I called Mr. McCall, he was not aware of anything that I, you know, had communicated, he was not even aware that my application was there. He said that he would follow back up with me once he confirmed and reached out to the appropriate parties here. And once that is done, then Mr. Franklin gave me a call back. Now, that conversation with Mr. Franklin um did not go so well. I was disappointed, and it could have been the lack of information that has been shared with him. But I think that we could do a better job in our communication and our responses to our citizens and those people that are serving as business owners in this community. Now, he shared with me that um he was not aware of certain things, and I asked certain questions because I had questions about it. And then he said that I wasn't eligible. And I said, well, who makes these, who who set up the requirements, who set up the requirements of the grant? How do you do you determine that when there was never a conversation with me? Everything on the checklist I submitted. As a matter of fact, it was twenty-six pages of documentation. And then I think he, uh, I'm sorry, I think then he said that um he understood and he agreed with me about the concerns that I had. And I said, well, I don't, I'm not happy with the conversation, and I want this to be taken to another level because I wanted someone to hear my concerns and understand that we cannot communicate with the people that are serving the citizens with lack of empathy and sensitivity. I have been robbed in my store, but I'm still open. If it had not been for this Christmas parade that we just had, I my revenue would have been low, and it has been low. But when you put something out there and you do a publication and you do a news publication about what the city is doing, and the business owner followed it to a T, if there's any discrepancy, the least it could have been was a phone call. Or a conversation to say, here's yay or nay, or this is why. To have my paperwork sitting down on his desk for the last three months with just sitting there, I could, I had questions about the confidentiality. If you're telling me the city council is handling it, now the paperwork is transferred somewhere else with my tax papers, my social security number, and other documents that you, bank statements that you require in this application process. So I'm disappointed, I'm upset, uh, he did say that Mr. Clements would reach out to me. Mr. Clements did not reach out to me, Mr. Pettway gave me a call. Again, it was this basketball syndrome. I was not aware of who Mr. Pettway was, I was prepared to talk to a person named Mr. Clements because he shared with me that that was the um assistant to the mayor. I even asked um to speak with Mayor Gardner, but I know protocol, so I knew that 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 wouldn't happen. But I wanted to come tonight to just to share my experience. I'm disappointed, it could have been handled better. The process in itself, I think that the city council should have known it from A to Z on what was gonna happen, what the response would be, and what to expect out of this. When you're dealing with money and we're dealing with the stigma that the city already has over its heads, we could have done a better job at this. And so I have some questions, um, President, that I would like to present to the council so that maybe we can get these questions answered, and that maybe the likelihood of this happening again, we can kind of alter that. Is it okay if I ask those questions?
Yes.
Yes ma'am. So I wanted to know about the accountability, accountability of these funds. How are the recipients that receive funds being tracked? If you have fifty or more businesses in the city of Pritchard and those businesses apply, is there a running list of who was approved, who was denied, and if so, has that been shared with the council? I questioned the integrity of the process. If I'm a business owner and I follow these instructions and I heard nothing back, but all of my tax documentation, all of my bank statements, and all that documentation is sitting somewhere in somebody's office, who protects that data when people have identity theft issues already? Who protects that? The transparency of the distribution. Even the state of Alabama gave a grant. And in that grant, you can go to the state's website and probably find out who the recipients were to receive those funds. So does the city have any plans to share that information with the citizens? If not, can I request that? And if so, I would pay for the cost of it, I would like to know who received those grants. The response of the applicant. I'm sorry? Okay. Common courtesy is if you were denied, even PPP, even the IDIL sent you an email and said you were denied, or you were approved. But to hear nothing back whether approved or denied, I think that we could have done a better job at that. Dealing with grants, I know that funds can get misconstrued. I think that, I I don't know this, Ms. President, but I would question if those funds were placed in a different account so that they could be tracked appropriately. Because when you merge money together sometimes, things get lost in between, so I would like that answer. How do you plan to protect the applicant's information? If I called back three months later and my data was sitting on someone's desk, that didn't protect me. I could, I I I set my account up for identity theft so I can get alert simply because I wasn't sure where this information was. I think it's appropriate to have a list of recipients shared with the community, or shared on the website, or shared at the person's request. On the website, it says, grant amount may vary. Who determines that, and how are those measures put in place? Is it determined by the loss of the business because I submitted my tax documentation showing what my loss is? Is that how the amount is um determined, or what are the measurements they put in place? You can't say, well, I'll give D and T five thousand and I'll give um the painted body shop next door fifteen hundred, and then someone around the corner maybe got twenty thousand. So what measures were in place to determine the value of the grant to each applicant that was awarded it? So my point of all today is, I think that we could have done a better job. There are so many red flags in this that could affect the city drastically. After we went through this racial injustice throughout the world, every company that I know was talking about diversity, equity, and inclusion. Same thing in these cities. You gotta make stuff equitable. In Pritchard, there's a diverse network of people, businesses, you got Asians, Mexicans, blacks, you got whites all over. It's diverse, but we gotta be fair in what we do. We have to be fair and transparent in the process that we have in place. I was grateful that the grant was available, I was looking forward to um, you know, receiving funds to help me. I shared with you all that I recently was robbed. When you, when you're robbed, you you and unfortunately, you're robbed by the community that you're trying to serve. But yet here's some money that's available to help me, and I still feel like I'm being robbed in that aspect of how I was treated. How I was treated. My mom used to say, it's not what you do, it's how you do it. But the lack of communication, the lack of accountability, and the lack of insensitivity, for him to agree to me and say, I understand what you're saying, but it's not my responsibility and the power that be, they're responsible, they set the rules, and my question was, well, who was, who is that? Because we all need to be having this conversation so the next young lady don't come in feeling like if I was a person that you could just totally intimidate and shut me down. But I didn't want to do that, because you have a right to know, this process is flawed. This process is not working. Who's protecting my information? What measures are in place? The council should have been able to know who's getting the money, what measures are in place to protect data. All of this stuff, we we, it it should be an A to Z checklist, the checklist on the application was everything that I submitted, that should have been shared with you guys. It should have been shared with you guys of, this is who we are excluding, this is why. I don't know if that was done. I don't know, there's other people just like me saying, wait a minute, the government provided funds, and now the city has put this checklist in place. But yet, I'm sorry, I guess my three minutes are up. But that those are my concerns tonight, Ms. President. Um, Mayor Gardner, I know, I I'm gonna say this and I'll sit down, um, my mother is seven...
I'm sorry? I would put you to uh go further than that, um, then I have to ask the person to use...
Yes ma'am. Yes, one minute. If 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 I may, just one minute. She is seventy-eight years old. One minute, I was sharing that my mother is seventy-eight years old, and I took her to her precinct to vote. She is a proponent of Mayor Gardner, she believed that in his integrity, the job that he did as a police chief, she believed in the safety of this community, and she believed that we were gonna do the right thing and be fair. This is a bad reflection on the council, indirect indirectly, indirectly, because Mr. McCall was not even aware that I was transferred to him to ask these questions. Wasn't aware of my application, wasn't aware of the situation. But I was told that it was a decision made on a higher level, and Mr. McNamalyum was not that person that made that decision, and I understand protocol and I understand decisions are. But I'm saying, I think that we need to take another look at this and make sure that we do some check and balance so that this does not become a disaster for the city of Pritchard. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, so, Ray, um, that I want to know the council, it's not more than a question, but if you have those, those sort of information, and submit it to the council?
Yes ma'am.
So to me, uh, so the attorney may have, uh, a written, a simulated, also for the council, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, let me make sure I understood you correctly, you said to submit the questions to you that I had.
About attorney hours? The secretary, okay, two, the secretary, that's what he suggests, that she would terminate there. Uh, you have a well dot, well dot person, C R S O N.
Thank you. No, ma'am. What I stated was I was referred to contact my city council person because that's, that was who was told that was handling that. And that's when I reached out to Mr. Griffin and he gave me Mr., um, um, McCall's number. So I'm not saying that the council was responsible. I'm saying that the information that the clerk's office provided to me was to contact the city council. Because the council was doing it for each district. That's what was told to me. So that seems like an administration issue. I'm referring to the Pritchard, um, Small Business Thrive Grant that was, um, published October twenty-fifth. Okay, that's, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, that's what I was told. So again, that's the communication that was given to me. So there's, that means that somebody in that office did not know. The Small Business Grant.
Quite frankly, she is speaking about ARP. That's the program. It's what she's speaking to. And there is a criterion, there are checkpoints as it relates to. And then they, within that, the boundaries of that, there may be some flaws here and there because there are so many engagements with individuals offering up to whatever that is. So, um, it is important though to know that, uh, that process is still ongoing, has not ceased at this point. But I would tell council, which I was gonna share later, that I am revamping, uh, the ARP altogether. The, the actually committee that's responsible for the ARP and revamping that as well after my review. So, uh, we will take a different approach as it relates to any of the things that you shared today. I think it's important that we do that. I would be sharing most of that information with council, uh, in the days to come. I've met with my attorney, city attorney as well as other courts law. I will be adding, uh, in this process with, uh, even having some citizens to be placed on that board as well. I would even be asking for council members to have a seat on that particular board as well. So that the process related to it can be more engaged as it relates to, I think that's important. So you, the same, would just bear with this demonstration for the next week to come. You will be in line in terms of how that process will move. And we will be share more, be more engaging to all applicants, but there are many. And, and because there are so many, that process tend to be really tough for those who are even sitting there. But I think when we're more engaged with, uh, with others from various communities, business, council, by administration and others, I think we'll, we need to do a better job in terms of building the ARP. So, uh, not only, not only do I be revamped in the ARP, while I, while I'm standing now, I would tell you that there are some other positions, and strangely speaking, that I will be revamping as well and changing based upon what I believe the leaders of the city is and what, uh, as the mayor of the city that I think that we need to do, um, to be better engaged in, within the community itself. So I will be doing those things. I will be sharing more with council coming into this new year in 2020. I made a commitment that we won't do what we've been doing in 21 and 22. I stand before you today and say, I'm committed to making these necessary changes as I've seen over the last months and I think that are necessary. And that's why I say to you, council, that I want you, uh, to be more engaged with some of the things that are taking place. Your voice can be heard, your citizen's voice can be heard and that we can stand together, you know, in matters that may come before us. And it won't be a matter that someone says, I didn't know or the process is different, I misunderstood. And I think if we do these things, then we'll be changed and to have a better, uh, system operating from, uh, as we move into the year 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. President. Mayor Gardner, thank you for that information. Um, I was told by, um, Mr. Pettway that, um, he would communicate some additional information to Mr. McMillan and then someone would get back to me. So I want to stand before you guys today. Mayor, you just made some commitments that I would want somebody to get back to me. I don't want to leave here today and I don't hear anything and I gotta continue to reach back out to follow up when, when somebody was told, I was told that, that somebody would get back with me.
I would only share one thing. We all have skin in the game, right? And so even in these processes, even when there's someone who's doing something, we have skin in the game. When it's not happening, I'm helping it happen. We need to speak to it, right? In that sense, I'm saying for anyone, whatever it is, you have a need and you put forth and you are expecting an answer and you had gathered within that reasonable time, I will say it is your duty, call whomever made those suggestions that they were gonna do something and see why it has not happened. Because we all have skin in the game. We all have faith. We all have faith in what we have. So I would, I would like for that to happen in that now.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm chairman.
Yes.
Make a motion that, uh, Ms. Teller, uh, the information and questions be made without a record.
That's secretary.
We cannot hear you in the office.
Uh, we make a motion that, uh, Ms. Teller, uh, questions be forward to our, uh, council secretary also be made without a record. So they'll, they'll be this.
I'll second that. Two, second, hold on.
Councilwoman Erin Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Erica Griffin.
Councilwoman George Paul.
Yes.
Council President O.C. Allen.
Yes.
Next, I am Mayor Report.
Yes, ma'am. I kind of shared it already in terms of, uh, in the year 2022, we want to do things a little bit different than what was done previously from administrative view. We want to be more engaging, not only for the citizens, but people in council and, and, and others who are involved in the day-to-day, uh, this city. I think we have a great opportunity to do that. We have ARP, as you just heard this team to speak to, having some issues within that process. We have other funding that's getting ready to come down as well as, as relates to infrastructure. But I want to make sure that we are engaged in it and we're having a conversation. And I, when I say that, I, I don't mean a conversation that we have when we in this body. But as the weeks go by, we need to be more engaged in, in places and have a conversation that's having impact on the citizens. And I know, uh, that we may come, uh, council may come, you know, during this session on Thursday. But we gotta have a meeting, uh, communicating throughout the week when issues and concerns come up where we can talk and not have to come in here and make a presentation to the public. But that's not what they really want to hear. That is, they, they want to hear what we're gonna do. So I want to make sure that, uh, that we're doing all that we can in 2022 to make sure they know what's happening with the infrastructure bill, what's happening with the remaining ARP and how, um, they can be better served as it relates to that. And so I'm standing for you today, uh, in this year, 2020, 2022. Thank God you'll be here. I want to make sure that we are, uh, more engaged in, in matters, uh, related to the, uh, to the city. I want to, I want to thank, uh, council members, uh, for all the efforts and, 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 and the other things that we've done across the city in 21. We carry it over in 22 and that is the street paving throughout the city. Just, uh, over the last couple of days, we've been able to do Moncine, I, and Feldner and other streets in and around the area. That process will continue as well. And it's a part of the communication process. Those citizens who desire for their roles to be done, I think the engagement is not only to the, I mean, not only to the council because you often hear, see your council. The council is responsible for that district. But guess what, I'm the mayor, I'm responsible for the entire city period. And so whether you talk to a council person or if I'm speaking into my office and there's need, then I would want to take that need on and get back, get an answer back to you, uh, that's deserving. And so while we are in the process of, of working on a many of the infrastructure issues that we have, I want to be able to lay out to the community where we are, what we're doing, when we're doing, and how long we expect to be in any of these situations that we have, particularly when it comes to the paving of the roads and, and sidewalks and, uh, doing something as it relates to the, uh, cohorts throughout the city. And so I do want to lay that plan out, but I do think it's important that, uh, we're engaged so, um, we can keep the citizens appon to where we are and, uh, and they have, uh, pre-knowledge of, you know, just what we're doing, where we're doing at, and if they choose to come by and see. Because, because if we don't do this, what we will get, those who, who don't want to see progress, they're never gonna see it. They're gonna, they're only gonna speak to a thing in a breaking news way. Right? Just breaking news. But there's a lot of great things that's, that's transpired over the city over the last year moving into this year and you won't hear anything about those things, very little about those things. But if it's about a death, we'll be, we all, we'll get on and want to be the first to tell someone that some, something tragic happened. We'll wait on Fox Ten or whatever news, uh, media is presenting or serving. They say breaking news, we're gonna take the time out to sit there and wait till the breaking news come out. But you never hear breaking news for the good news of any place. And particularly, uh, we find ourselves in that situation again. So I'm saying to you that, and I'm saying to the citizens as well, that we will do a better job in, in, in putting our information to where we are, where we're going in terms of, uh, improvement of the city. And if there's some issues and concern that you may have, concern me as you tell your council, I want to know what they are. I don't want anybody to suspect that because I am the mayor that I have the information, I know it, because that, it doesn't work that way. But I, I knew it when you called, if you leave it with a fake, I, I feel that I can get it and I can respond to it and I will respond to it. Most folks even have my direct number anyway, my personal direct number. But I want to say that we've done great things and I think they're great things. 2022 is our year. Uh, in, in 2022, I expect to be a great year for us. Today, I met with a group from Savannah, Georgia and California who actually, uh, met with them for about a couple of hours and engaged and to think that, uh, that we're looking forward to coming and, uh, and creating here in our city. And I'm talking about things that would be in the multi-million dollars in terms of this creation. Well, that's a process. As we move forward, uh, I would ask that, uh, that representative council member that person will be sitting in on those same engagements. It was important so we can share that information out. But right now, I, I just want to mention the fact that there's a lot of opportunity here for this city and, uh, I want us to be engaged. I want us to be to provide, um, with citizens, uh, with the information that they need. I am revamping a lot of things across the city, positions, departments, public works. I'm gonna make some changes there. Try to deal with some of the issues that we're having in terms of, when it's trash and garbage or anything else in terms of pickup. Uh, I'm, I'm gonna need the citizens to be engaged as well as it relates to. And I'll be sending out information related to that because it's gonna take all of us. We all have a stake in it. We need to be ready to, you know, provide our part in this process. This municipal fee is an important part of this. You can expect to have growth and when we're not paying municipal fee, we're nearly a million dollars from citizens behind in, in, in municipal fees. And so if you got great expectation, you want, you know, garbage to, to be furnished on time and for them to run even on their holidays, like if these employees should have a holiday, then, uh, we should be ready to pay them, uh, to be able to, to do those things. And so, but as citizens, as good citizens, we need to be ready to, to, you know, take on our part. And as, uh, the electoral officials, we need to be ready to do our part. So with that being said, I just want to share that in that way. I will be providing additional information as I revamp. The administration, department heads and so forth. There will be some major changes that take place over the city over the next month or so. I just wanted to give you guys a head up to those things are, are going to happen. I want to give you a head up on the ARP. Uh, I did my assessment, uh, and, uh, I just think we could do that whole process in a better way, uh, after looking it over. And again, I think that we can include citizens and other business folk along with council in that process and get a better job done as it relates to that committee. And if it stands, it no longer stands in that way, but as it once stood, I think, uh, we can create a committee that will be, uh, going out to the needs, uh, of the, of the citizens in this city as it relates to that. So I will be reaching out to you as well and ask you to, to get on the committee, citizens on the committee, and other business folks on the committee. And there is a stipend that go along with it. Uh, and I know there's a process that we're gonna need to talk about what that should look like as well. So, uh, I just want to put everybody on notice that it's coming. And I will be sharing more later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
May I announce, can I just talk to my?
Yes, I have a good announcement. We often, um, come up with good complaints, but I have a good announcement. One of the citizens, uh, down the 311 number and she talked to the, to the public works. And, uh, as a result of that, they called her this morning and she relayed to me, we've been all this time. She talked with Mr. Aaron Taylor, I believe it was, and he told her that he was coming out to assess the situation and concern of her and she told him she had come out within the hour and he had the truck behind him and they started the work that was necessary to, uh, eliminate this concern. And I did tell her that that was good and I'm glad to know that. And I think she called public works back and she relayed that to them. I said that to say, these, these are the type of things we as citizens do see happening in our community. I said that to say this, these are the type of things we, as citizens, we see happening in our community. When the citizens call, they need to be addressed and someone needs to come out at least and say something. And I'm, I think public works, but I'm hoping in 22, this will continue on.
Anything else?
My German. So move. Councilwoman Erin Williams.
Yes.
Councilwoman Stephanie Johnson Norwood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Derrick Griffin. Councilman Georgia Paul.
Yes.
Council President OCL.
Thank you all for being tuned in. That's the conclusion of the first city council meeting in the city of Pritchard. This is Big Y'all J45 Live Morning Show. If you'd like to see this video again, it will be available on Facebook, also on YouTube, one of my pages, Mario D. Y'all Senior. So tune in, thank y'all.
I met you in the past, so I just wanted to say hello, it's been a while ago.
How you doing?
Yeah, it's the mask and everything.
But I'm trying to think where I know you from.
I don't know, but I know that we met before, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank y'all for being tuned in, it's Big Y'all J45 Live Morning Show. Uh, right here live, first council meeting of the year, 2022. Right here, thank you for being tuned in, see you tomorrow, J45 Live.